This is the regular City Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, for the City of Largo. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. Let's all stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and gather this day. We ask you for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meetings so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals this day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a ceremonial item, the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
Whereas—
I got that backwards. Recreation and Parks Month.
Whereas parks and recreation programs enhance the quality of life in Largo by contributing to a healthy lifestyle and protecting the natural environment, and whereas parks, recreation, and arts programs boost the economy, attract new business, and increase tourism; and whereas Largo is home to a rich inventory of park, cultural, and recreation facilities; and whereas the Largo Recreation, Parks, and Arts Department has been nationally and regionally recognized as an agency of excellence providing award-winning facilities and programming; and whereas parks were a refuge for many during the recent pandemic, providing a safe place to enjoy the outdoors and exercise, now therefore I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, along with Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of July, 2021, Recreation and Parks Month in the City of Largo and throughout Florida, and encourage all of our citizens to enjoy the many benefits available to them through parks and recreation.
So you're probably wondering why on July 20th we're doing a proclamation. It's not because we didn't look at the calendar and weren't prepared. It's because the last meeting was interrupted, derailed by Hurricane Elsa. So we hope that everybody's been celebrating all month long. We've done a lot of things. If there's one thing we learned during the pandemic, it's that parks and recreation are truly essential services in a community. And for that, I do want to thank the City Commission for the support that they've always demonstrated in building a great system of parks and recreation in Largo. I also want to invite all of our residents during these last 11 days, this is the time to party hearty, the last 11 days of Parks and Recreation Month, to get out and enjoy all that our community of choice has to offer. Visit a new park. Go to the market on Saturday in Largo Central Park. Enjoy a free concert on July 31st sponsored by the Performing Arts Center. Take advantage of the mobile recreation opportunities that you saw prior to this meeting tonight. Cool off at one of our pools. But whatever you do, help us celebrate the great facilities and programs that we have here in Largo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we get to recognize a great community partner for sponsoring the Fourth of July fireworks.
The Recreation, Parks, and Arts Department, on behalf of the City of Largo, wants to publicly thank and recognize Indian Rocks Baptist Church and Indian Rocks Christian School for their generous sponsorship of the July 4th fireworks in Largo Central Park. Not only did this church provide financial support for this great event, but their volunteers distributed fans to those in attendance, provided music groups to entertain with patriotic songs, and even coordinated with the fireworks company to provide a musical tribute during the show. In appreciation of their great community partnership and on behalf of the City of Largo and thousands of residents who enjoyed this wonderful patriotic display, we would like to present this plaque to Indian Rocks Baptist Church. Thank you for your support. And with me is Dean— with Indian Rocks Baptist.
System of the Year.
I just wanted to spend a little time just to thank the Commission and administration for all your support for what you do for us, because we wouldn't be able to receive awards like this if it wasn't for you. The Florida Water Environment Association Award was given to us by, I think, April for the medium category utility collection system. That's 10,000 to 50,000 connection points in the system. We won this once, once in the past, 2008. We have a much better system, a better, better support system from our engineering department. I appreciate everything that they do for us. Without this team, we wouldn't be able to receive items like this. This is great. We have a great personnel now, well-trained. They're out in the middle of the night taking care of everybody's, you know, make sure we're not packing up in people's houses, having SSOs, which is always a good thing. So I just wanted to make sure that we shared this with you and tell you how much we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Henry, could I ask if we could get this marketed out as best as we can to the public? This would be a great opportunity to let our citizens and thank them for everything they do.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I'll tell you, I'm not surprised that we won it this year, but I am a little surprised that we won it in 2008, because our system is much better now than it was then. Next, we'll have citizens comment. If you'd like to speak about something on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until Adam comes up. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards tonight.
Thank you. Before we move on to item number four, as you may see, Commissioner Robinson is joining us remotely, and we just need authorization from the Commission for him to participate with the meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes, or I'm sorry, of tonight's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 15th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item six, approval of the assignment of a maintenance agreement for stormwater pipes located adjacent to 1159 Clearwater Largo Road. Item seven, approval of the assignment of a maintenance agreement for right-of-way improvements located adjacent to 1159 Clearwater Largo Road. Item eight, award of the contract number 21-B-720, EGRIT Drive Box Culvert Remediation to American Empire Builders Incorporated for construction in the amount of $259,999.50. Item nine, award of bid number 21-B-727, Yard Waste, Class III Waste, and Construction Demolition Debris Disposal to Angelo's Recycled Materials and Consolidated Resource Recovery Incorporated for a three-year period in the estimated amount of $900,000 per year. Item 10, acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement located at 801 West Bay Drive. Item 11, approval of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Funding (CDBG-CV) Subrecipient Agreement for Society of St. Vincent de Paul South Pinellas Incorporated in the amount of $236,160. Item 12, award of bid number 21-B-714, Roof Replacement Public Works Administration to Allied Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $287,030. Item 13, Resolution Number 2295, amending the 401A Defined Contribution Plan and the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan to discontinue the second loan provision adopted for COVID-19 relief. Item 14, renewal of RFP number 18-P-634, Group Voluntary DMO and PPO Dental Insurance to United Healthcare for a one-year period beginning October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022 in the estimated amount of $304,000. Item 15, renewal of RFP number 13-P-446, Group Medical Insurance for plan year October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022 with Public Risk Management of Florida Health Trust in the estimated amount of $12,995,400. Item 16, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Bryant Miller Olive in the amount of $140,000 for legal services related to the issuance of debt for the new City Hall project and the new parks building complex.
You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without Commission discussion, including staff background, provided in the Commission packets.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is item number 17.
the fiscal year 2021-2022 CDBG Action Plan. This plan serves as the official grant application submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for the city's annual CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant funding allocation, in the amount of $523,112. Since the city is part of the Pinellas County Consortium for the Home Investment Partnership, or home funding, the resolution also includes endorsement of the $274,215.54 from home funding that will be included in the Pinellas County's action plan for allocation to the City of Largo. The action plan outlines the housing and community development goals and projects that will be pursued in this, in the next fiscal year with these funds, as well as other state and local funding that we have available for housing projects. The action plan includes continued investment into affordable housing creation and preservation, homebuyer purchase assistance, supportive services through subrecipient agencies, and funding toward neighborhood improvements in the CDBG target area, which is predominantly in our downtown area, and two capital improvement projects for area nonprofit agencies. A 30-day public comment period was advertised, and no public comments were received during that time. This plan was brought to the Commission at the June Work Session and also to the Community Development Advisory Board. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and that our department recommends approval of this plan.
Resolution Number 2291, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, approving the City of Largo Community Development Block Grant (CDBG) fiscal year 2021 through 2022 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the submittal of Largo's Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development (HUD), endorsing the Pinellas County, Florida, fiscal year 2021 through 2022 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the city manager or his designee to accept said grant upon approval by HUD, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions from the Commission?
All right. I have a question. First of all, I want to say that this plan, as I bet you, it is extraordinary. It's in-depth, it's thoughtful, it's highly specific, and I really appreciate that so much. But I do have a question. I understand that the Community Development Advisory Board couldn't, didn't have a quorum at the meeting when this was considered. Does that happen often?
Not typically, no. So we do have a timeline for submittal to HUD. We have to get it to them by August 15th, but we have to get it, the county submits on our behalf, so we do have that August deadline to bring it to them. However, our advisory board was also integrated into the project at multiple stages in creation of this plan. It was brought to the, kind of the framework of the funding in March, as well as getting their approval at that time for continuing subrecipient funding from this year to the next year and so forth. So they're always involved in every step out of the way. Unfortunately, we had two members at the last moment that were unable to attend in June.
Okay, thanks. And I understand that there are two buildings that are scheduled for demolition. What buildings are those? Do you, do you know off the top of your, it's not critical, but do you know off the top of your head? I know we're waiting for staffing to come up to—
I'm not sure. I can get touch base with you after. I'm not sure if they're, they're new projects we're looking at potentially.
There were a couple of buildings that were scheduled for demolition and waiting for staff to be available to do that. So as I said, it's not critical. I was just curious.
Okay. Maybe it's talking about the slum and blight funding?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's not identified projects for that. We do have, that is a program we're working on getting operationalized. We do have funding in this year's action plan, as well as next year's action plan for that. Now that housing is up to full staff, that is, on the agenda to get those documents up and running so that we can offer slum and blight removal on a spot basis. So if someone can't afford to demo a building that they have, you know, major deterioration on, we could help with that, on just removing that blight. We do have a few that we are looking at. It's too early to disclose necessarily what we're working on for that, but in, in those cases, typically they're vacant. We're not displacing people and things, things of that nature, but we are looking to utilize that program too, to help out with building new affordable housing on those lots, if possible, as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Really, Commissioner Gerard kind of addressed the issue that I was going to address, but I was also going to add that when I was present during deliberations for the board, they were very thoughtful deliberations, very proud of the work that they did, and they did this through the, you know, the use of face masks and social distancing and all the other things. We had some vacancies in the board, but lots of very, very good discussions, so it was well done. And the staff did an excellent job again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2291.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2021-61.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2021-61, which amends the city's indemnification policy for the defense of city officials and city employees. As you recall from my presentation of the first reading of the ordinance, this ordinance will update the city's policy to make it consistent with state statute, so bringing it up to date. And we're also addressing some issues that we have had experience in the past where the city has decided to provide a defense to employees when otherwise, under the policy, they might not have been able to receive a defense. And so we're trying to address the issue when there's certain allegations that the city doesn't believe are accurate, but, and wishes to stand behind their officials and employees. There have been no changes since first reading, and we would recommend approval of ordinance 2021-61 on second reading.
Ordinance Number 2021-61, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Section 2-50 of the City Code of Ordinances by amending the definitions by clarifying the city's obligations to indemnify, protect, and defend public officials and city employees in civil, criminal, and administrative proceedings, and authorizing the defense of public officials and employees in certain circumstances under a reservation of rights letter, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions from the Commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-61 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is award of RFP number 21-P-723.
Thank you so much for your time today. I'm excited to be here today and presenting this item to you. As you all know, in early 2018, LEAP, or the Largo Environmental Action Plan, was presented to you all and helped lay the foundation for many successes that our organization has seen, from Ready for 100 to electric vehicle transitions, and it also helped celebrate other successes from across departments within the organization. We have grown to be leaders in sustainability and resilience in the region, thanks to all of the hard work from all of the amazing team members that we have. So now we have the opportunity to further that leadership and bring LEAP up to date by creating a community-led sustainability and resilience plan. And this has been informed by the 2020 Annual Commission Retreat. If you remember, that topic was to help inform the plan. We took a little pause in 2020 for some reason, and are now ready to kickstart the next phase of this process. So we're here today to seek approval and award of our consultant services to Collective Water Resources and their subconsultants to be our partner and the community's champion during this process. So with that, I'd like to introduce Liz Perez, who is the President of Collective Water Resources, who will provide us with a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of the Commission. It is a true pleasure to be here with you tonight to present our first round of information on the update to your LEAP. So with that said, can we bring up the presentation? I'll dive right in while they're pulling that up. Laura just did a great job of revising and sort of refreshing our information on the original LEAP plan. We can skip ahead a couple of slides here. There we go. Keep going. So as we just discussed, you began this journey in 2018 with the creation of your original LEAP plan. This next phase will be a significant update to bring in various issues of resilience as well. And we really believe that you cannot have both sustainability and resilience without bringing both elements together. However, it is fairly rare for a local government to do that, so that's very innovative, and we applaud you for doing so. Next slide. One additional element that makes your plan very unique is that it will be community-led. That is a significant and probably the most significant part of the project, and we're beginning that very early on in the project. The first several months of the project will focus heavily on the community-led elements of the plan. Next slide, please. So what are the aspects of this plan being community-led? Well, first of all, we want it to be equitable, adaptable. We don't want any dusty plans that sit on shelves. This will be a living plan, an engaging plan, an active plan. And of course, we want it to be driven by data and the best science available. Next slide, please. So the first phase, also Phase One, will be really looking at this community-led process. This is where we really want to bring everyone to the table. You all know more than anyone that you, you tend to see a lot of the same faces. We really want to get out in the community and make sure we're engaging all of the community members. Next slide, please. Next slide. There we go. So how will we accomplish that? Well, we do always want to start by listening, but we also want to build local capacity. So we want to tap into not just your staff, but those community leaders, the business leaders, and the various members of your community, so that they can live on in engaging with this plan and implementing this plan. And we will have a number of subject matter experts engaged on the plan. We also have outreach experts, and one of those outreach experts is Dr. Alec Bogdanoff. He's our deputy project manager. He's also a climate scientist and a meteorologist. So we have an entire team we're bringing together on this engaging plan. Next slide, please. So it's important, as I said, to get everyone to the table. Part of that is understanding their why. What is their why behind sustainability and resilience? Gone are the days of having those tired public meetings where we just sort of, you know, talk at the public. We really want to get everyone to the table and engagement in, in this plan. Next slide, please. So to do that, we're going to drive that with a process and a cycle, where we may make some corrections as we go, as I said, always creating this living plan. Next slide, please. So the second phase is really where we start to engage with the science and the data to create this data-driven process. Next slide. So to do that, we'll be looking at a number of different elements of climate science to create a vulnerability assessment, but we will also be looking at greenhouse gases. We have one of the national experts on greenhouse gases on our team, IFC, as well as environmental conditions data, because we know that your natural resources are also so important to the city. Next slide. So here we have a summary of the timeline for the plan. We'll be working on Phase One for the remainder of the year, moving into Phase Two early next year, and then hopefully completing the plan by September of 2022. And we also have the outcomes shown here on this second slide in a similar format. So there's a number of different outcomes of this plan. You will have this living process, but your staff will also be armed with new data and information regarding your risk and vulnerability. Hopefully, we will have built capacity throughout the city to look at resilience and adaptation, sustainability, and really create your next chapter in this process. Next slide. So here's the budget shown for Phases One and Two for a total of $231,575. Next slide. And we really want to just tell you and reassure you that, as mentioned, we're bringing an entire team to this process. A lot of us are small businesses. A lot of us have a strong presence here in the region, and we are, we do this work every day. We work on issues of climate change, resilience, outreach, equity, engagement, every day. Have worked throughout the United States and internationally on such. And next slide. Here are a number of our team leaders. I encourage you to say hello if you see us walking through the hallways. We'll be busily working on this plan through September of 2022 of next year. As you can see, we do have experts on equity and engagement, outreach, social media. We also have a number of accomplished engineers, scientists, natural resources experts, and really just a wide variety of climate experts. Next slide. So we just want to leave you with the idea, one slide up, please, that this, we recognize this is a chapter in the book that you're writing as a city, and we really believe that this will be an important and engaging chapter. Resilience and sustainability are not a one-shot deal. This will be, this will be part of a process, but it's about the journey, not the destination. It can be a meaningful and engaging and interesting journey. We're excited and very pleased to be on this journey with you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have now and throughout the project.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have no public input.
Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Smith.
I'll start it off. I really like that it's community-driven, led. I, I think that's a good thing we need to do, and, and not only just the businesses in that, but also the, the youth of our, of our city, because they are the future. And sometimes they think a hell of a lot out of the box than we do sometimes, so I'm, I'd love to have them more engaged as best we can on this. And also from— can on this. And also from this, what we can learn from this, how to get out into the public without trying to, more of a listening, what can we take from this process to future meetings when we're going out to the, the community, to listening and engaging them in a different way, I think will help also. The other question, at a Forward Pinellas meeting, I had someone was talking about sustainability. They were talking, what, what is our goal, that we can be as a regional work together from this, this dock and from LEAP and what we're going to get out of this for our city, but as a county as a whole? Because we're all in this together. I mean, this is what we need to do. I mean, I, I think the end, where Clearwater starts, or Largo ends and Clearwater starts into Pinellas Park and those kind of things, people in the, the climate doesn't know the difference about boundaries. So can y'all talk a little bit about what can come from this, that we can look at a regional approach, a federal, and also maybe bringing in our, our state reps on something like this to our federal officials, because they need to be partners, not just in Largo, but the entire, in the world personally. But I'm curious, so what, what kind of, if that's just throwing things at the wall real quick?
No, that, that's a really great question. I can start, and if you have any, you know, experience from other regions that you've worked in. We are conducting this at a really great time, because not only is Pinellas County itself conducting their Sustainability and Resilience Plan, which will be done before we're done, but the Tampa Bay Regional Resilience Coalition, which we have an MOU with, is in the process of conducting theirs as well. And that is anticipated to be done this calendar year. And then in addition to that, the City of Largo was a co-founder of the Pinellas Sustainability and Resilience Network. So myself, Hank Hattie, at the county and other counterparts, were actively engaging and working around creating collaborative processes, so that our policies, our strategies and our plans work together within the region. So we do have all of those, fortunately, happening, you know, all at the same time. So it's a really great opportunity to, you know, use that momentum that's being gained there and making sure that it's not just something that we focus on and somebody else doesn't, but that we look at a one shoreline, a one-water kind of policy.
And piggyback a little bit, or pull off that a little bit. And that's something we should be explaining out to citizens and to other government officials, because this elected official kind of didn't know kind of what was going on. And I think trying to get that information out there, that we're, we want to be team players on this, because, like I said, we're on this small planet, and we need to work together. So I, I really like hearing that. And maybe if we could try to market it, not market, but get it out there to the, the smaller cities as best we can, because I find that they're kind of asking the questions. I, I think it was St. Pete Beach, I thought, was, I think they were the one that was, like, had some really interesting ideas. They were thinking outside the box there. So I think working together is the best thing we can do.
And if there's opportunities that we can identify, you know, to participate and share, and that, we absolutely will, yes.
Yeah. Why reinvent the wheel, honestly? So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is always a little awkward, so I'll try to keep my comments short to some extent here. First, I just want to say thank you to Laura and your team for all the hard work that you guys have been doing over the past several months, and getting this program up and running. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to the outcome here in the next year or so. And then I think, just to address Commissioner Smith's comments, you know, I can, I can assure you that I've had multiple conversations with elected officials around the county and the state. And a lot of them know what we're doing in Largo when it comes to our environmental action plan. And to be honest with you, have been really taking some of those things and trying to, you know, initiate them in their own cities and regions. And I also, as the President of the Central League this year, plan to, you know, kind of work on some of these issues, understanding that it is a regional issue. And I think a great way for us to be able to do that, you know, using that type of forum. So again, just really happy for, to see this program getting, moving forward, and really looking forward to the outcome. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had a question, well, first comment. I, I know that, as Laura touched on, there's a lot of efforts from the county, from a regional standpoint, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is putting together a Resiliency and Sustainability Summit in this coming spring, I believe. And, and I, I like to encourage other folks, but it's also very nice to be leading the way and to be seen as, as somebody that's not, as a group, that's not afraid to take new steps and do new things and do things that other people aren't doing. So, so I don't want to wait for other folks to all think it's a good idea to continue to move forward with this stuff like this. There was, the term "community-led" was used a couple times, both in the presentation and on the, on the graphics. And so my question is, give me some examples of how, like, a regular old Joe citizen may participate and, and input into this process early on?
I'm going to allow Alec to take it to that.
Thank you. I, I think one of the important parts is to start with education. You know, for a lot of folks, this is a really complex topic. There's a lot of information, you know, we're talking words like adaptation, mitigation, what does that mean? So we start with an education component, making sure that they can come, have an approachable conversation with the community, and then really ask them, what's important to you? So, for example, is sustainability in parks really important to them? Do we need to focus on thinking about tree cannibies in the park? And really allowing the community to not just say, okay, I like this, but actually coming to us with what's important to them, what parts of the community are important to them? And we can use that to really drive where we focus the action plan and thinking through what the next steps might be.
Thank you.
And if I could provide one example of what that process might look like, typically, you focus more on the outcomes and providing the community with something to comment on, but it's really allowing them to steer the process. So an example of that is, we had a number of community organizations, Sierra Club, High Point, Neighborhood Family Center, et cetera, even review the RFP to submit for the consultant, so that they're really getting buy-in from the beginning and having their voice heard on what they want this to look like. You know, developing project management plan aspects, things like that. That would typically be done by just the government entity, where we're giving that support and education, recognizing their self-determination and helping them lead the process.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Thank you. Laura, you were starting to ask, starting to answer my first question. By the way, really grateful to have you on the team. I really love the work you're doing and, and the whole team. It's really, as you already heard, we are out in front on this, and it's great to be a leader on such an important topic, you know? What, you know, specifically, what will you be doing to, to get the word out to people and, and to get them engaged? Education's really important, explaining words like, you know, mitigation and such. And I heard about some of these community groups, but what, you know, this is, this is a city that covers, you know, the entire midsection of the county. There's a lot of different areas. There's a lot of different people. So what do you do specifically to get them engaged, get the word to them, and get them to come to these things? Who should I be looking at?
I'll start. You know, I think the reality is, we're consultants that aren't, you know, here on a daily basis and, and in the community, but there are organizations that are. And so we're not always going to be the right people to have those conversations. And that's why we talked about capacity building. It's a really important part. So we want to really work with those community organizations that are on the ground and with people on a daily basis, and help them be those folks who have that conversation. And so it's a little bit of a, kind of a train-the-trainer type model, but ultimately, we have to build that capacity across the entire community. Because you're right, we're not, we're not going to be able to have, you know, we're going to do public meetings and provide input and even do more, you know, what I call 24/7 outreach, make sure folk can submit online forms and photos and comments that way. But we do need to make sure we work with those community, those trusted community organizations that have spent decades building relationships in the community already.
Okay, thanks. And one more question. Because there are, because the county and the Regional Planning Council and all these are, are working on, on their own assessments at the same time concurrently, do you have plans to share information back and forth throughout the process, so maybe we can show them something that we've learned, and they can say, oh my gosh, I didn't think of that, and then they can share information? So even as we're moving forward, we're already on top of things. We don't have to start when everybody's done and say, so what did you learn? You know?
So a couple of things on that. Yes, absolutely. So an example of that is, the county has already started some of their vulnerability assessment data collection. They gave to our engineering department just one precipitation model on some of our assets, and it was like four terabytes of data. We had to go buy, like, a special USB drive for it. So we've already got that from them, and that's just one layer of what they're getting. So then, of course, with the Pinellas Sustainability Resilience Network, where it's us individuals in these roles, we're actively collaborating on that. And then we're working with the Regional Resilience Council similarly, where possible as well. Another example is, we just reviewed the, and provided comments back to the county on their engagement plan for their sustainability and resilience plan. So we're actively sharing documents, sharing knowledge. But I think it's really important in anywhere we can, you said, there's no boundary. So anywhere that we can share, it's, it's a very collaborative environment.
You can contact University of Florida, by the way, to use their new supercomputer for crunching some of that data. So, thanks very much. Great stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve award of RFP number 21 dash P dash seven twenty-three to Collective Water Resources LLC for the Sustainability and Resilience Plan Consultant Services and the estimated amount of $235,000 upon adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Laura, can we get that presented, PowerPoint?
Yes, absolutely. We'll make sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is item number 20, Resolution Number 2294.
Good evening. The intent of this item is to establish the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The acronym for that is AHAC. The City of Largo currently receives a yearly allocation from the state, from the State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or SHIP Program. And cities or in counties that receive SHIP funds, if they receive funds above the minimum allocation of $350,000 in any year, must appoint an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, or AHAC. This year, we expect our allocation to be approximately $558,000. So we are clearly above the minimum. And accordingly, we are before you to deal with the establishment of an AHAC for this year. This committee is charged with reviewing established policies and procedures that affect the provision of affordable housing within the city. This group will, during its course of activity, hear presentations from staff in terms of what codes and policies we have in place that encourage affordable housing, and will make recommendations to strengthen, increase, encourage, and possibly will look at, at different ways of encouraging affordable housing with the city. So they have a fairly broad mandate. At the conclusion of its work, this December, the AHAC will make an annual report to the City Commission that will contain its recommendations. This report will, as I suggested or said, contain actions and initiatives that the AHAC will be recommending to encourage and facilitate affordable housing. Resolution Number 2294 is attached. That will establish the AHAC. I would like to note that in the attached resolution, under Section One, Establishment and Terms of Office, the word "citizen" in front of each category is qualified by the word "Largo," so that it reads "Largo citizen." When we've researched the state requirements, the state statute that deals with this, a Largo citizen is not required in these cases. There is one category that does require that there be a member who is an individual that resides within the city limits. We will have one or more members who meet that criteria in any case. So what we are recommending tonight is that if the City Commission chooses to approve this resolution, that it remove the word "Largo" from in front of "citizen." This provides us with opportunities to draw in professionals and people who are active in this area that work within our community, but also are active within the general Pinellas County area, and gives us a broader field to bring in kind of the best people. So with that, that's our recommendation. We are ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Resolution Number 2294, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, providing for the appointment of the members of the committee, providing the terms of office of the members of the committee, providing for the duties and responsibilities of the committee, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
No cards. I've checked teams. No.
I believe Vice Mayor Robinson's hand went up early on, so Vice Mayor Robinson?
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question about the members. And in the, the text of the agenda, it states that the, oh, where's it at here? So it says, specific membership requirements for the members. Can you speak to what some of those requirements might be? And also, I know that Commissioner Gerard is going to be the commissioner liaison for that board, but are you looking for any recommendations, or do you already have people in mind? I know we've done this in the past, to sit on these, on this board, or, you know, to be approved to sit on this board?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll respond to that. We do plan to be in front of the City Commission on August the 3rd with a list of members, potential members, for you to review and potentially approve. There are several categories. I could go through the entire list. I mean, basically, the categories are intended to encompass the different aspects of activity associated with affordable housing. So someone who's actively engaged in the residential home building industry, the banking and mortgage industry, areas of labor associated with the provision of affordable housing, advocate for low-income persons, the creation of non-for-profit affordable housing, or for-profit affordable housing, a member of the planning board, a citizen who resides within the city limits. We have, I think at this point, we've identified that the nine people that we would recommend represent about eight of these categories. So it's a pretty broad group that you'll be looking at. And they do represent backgrounds, including the banking industry, real estate, the provision of affordable housing, the advocacy for affordable housing. The intention is to create a broad, balanced group that can develop recommendations that make sense community-wide. So we've invested a fair amount of time in identifying and approaching people.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fenger?
Thank you. I guess you kind of answered my question, because I was contacted by someone who said they were going to be part of this committee. Is, do those, I guess you just said, those individuals that you identified have already been asked?
I, of course, don't know who talked to you, but we do have representatives of, of all of these different categories, or eight of these categories, including real estate.
Yeah.
So if that's the case.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to add real quickly. So these categories are dictated by state statutes and were required and we're required to have at least eight of the 11 categories represented on the committee for that, for that balanced nature of it. So, we did make sure that we had people that did represent those categories, and that's the list we'll be bringing to you on the 3rd.
Thank you. If somebody, if a resident or somebody that is interested, or somebody that might fit one of these categories, was interested in serving isn't necessarily on your list, could they contact you and get on that list?
Yes.
And they would just contact the city and?
Yeah.
Okay. I did have another question. This is kind of a roundabout way to ask when we last had over the minimum. But I know that we've had this type of a committee in the past, and when was the last time that we did?
It was 2015.
2015 was the last time that we were funded over the minimum.
Yeah. So, it was the fall of 2015, the City Commission established the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. It did its work within a three to four-month period and came back before you with a report.
Thank you. I kind of knew the answer to that, but I just wanted to point out how long it's been since we got the minimum, or more.
Yes, sir.
So, it's nice to be over the minimum this year. And then, thank you all for all the good work that you guys do with this allocation.
So, are you saying that in this resolution, it should be amended to delete the word Largo?
Yes.
In all those membership categories?
Yes.
That is correct.
Along those lines, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to amend this, to remove Largo in front of the word citizen in all those categories.
So, moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I move to approve resolution number 2294 as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, and I'm sure everybody here knows, but the legislature this year took action to amend the Sodowsky Fund distributions, and finally, we can actually count on regular disbursements to the city, probably at this level, instead of wondering every year whether we're gonna get this money. So, it's sort of a bittersweet thing, but yeah, we can now have some continuity and actually plan on the income that's coming.
You should knock on wood. Just because it's Tallahassee we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, they can, yeah, they can change that next year. But right now, it's law. So.
Thank you.
I, just one last, or, 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 I'm a little uncomfortable, a little bit about the membership, but that, I'll get over that. Is it possible before the 3rd, I stop by and kind of get a little bit more comfortable on that subject?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Those are always open for you. So, yeah, that, again, we were trying to make sure that we found people that not only represented the, you know, the different categories, but then we also had to make sure they didn't have active projects in the city, so there wasn't conflict. So, we, we really want to make sure that they were a good fit for the committee in terms of that. But we welcome your, your feedback.
That was kind of one that I was kind of curious of, was, do they have projects? Or down the road, do they have projects? And then?
To our knowledge, the ones that are on there do not have projects.
And then, maybe that's probably come up the 3rd. How many, are any, are any of these from the previous in 2015?
That's a good question. I think it's predominantly a new group. We can go back and look.
Okay. I'll ask those questions.
I think it's, yeah. Yeah, I think it's predominantly a new group. There may be one or two that was from prior.
Okay.
Thank you. And it's always a little bit of a challenge to get, to get all those categories filled and get people to, that want to volunteer to be on this, or this, this group as well. So, thank you for doing some of that legwork. And according to my math, there will be at least three Largo residents regardless, because one has to be a Largo. Well, maybe not, because one could be both, I guess.
We, we definitely have two that represent advisory board members. So, we have planning board member and one from the Community Development Advisory Board member. So, they're board. And Commissioner Gerard. I will look through and verify. But, yep, some or more, they, they work within the communities for different projects.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have one more thing. Yeah, absolutely. It's like, I'll just, just starts popping in. So, this advisory board is not going to be established the same way our other, the other boards are, where each one is represented by one of us. Like, we?
Correct. No, it's, it's, so, it's.
It's a totally separate type of board.
We'll vote on, on the membership of this board on August 3rd, and then, it's, it's gonna be a temporary advisory board, and they'll produce a product at the end of the year, which we'll vote on, and then they'll, they'll no longer be on the board. They'll have done their role.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we'll see the whole slate, or the whole slate on August 3rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number, actually, it's not an ordinance. Next is item number 21. I took too many notes and got out of.
Got nervous there for a minute.
Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This item is the approval of the proposed property tax rate to be levied and the time, date, and place for the first, first public hearing for the property tax rate and budget adoption for FY22. Each year, the commission must establish a property tax rate for the coming year. This decision impacts not just the immediate year ahead, but also has a long-term impact on the city's financial health and service delivery. Additionally, state statutes affecting property tax increase have made the property tax a focal point in our annual budget. It's important to note that the rate approved tonight is not the final rate that will be adopted. The rate approved tonight is the maximum rate the commission could levy and will be advertised in the truth and millage or trim notices sent to all property owners. At the subsequent public hearings for the tax rate and budget in September, the commission may adopt a rate lower than or equal to the rate established tonight. The commission may not choose to adopt a rate higher than that which is voted on tonight. The Pinellas County Property Appraiser will be mailing these trim notices on August 23rd to all property owners, and they'll calculate property taxes using this proposed FY22 tax rate, and they'll include that time, date, and place for the first public hearing for the tax rate and budget adoption. These hearings will be on Tuesday, September 7th at 6:00 PM, and Thursday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM, and that will be a special meeting. Included in the proposed budget, the city manager has recommended maintaining the current rate of 5.62 mils. The current rate, 5.62, generates an additional 8.13% in property tax revenue due to increasing property values, new construction, and annexation. In other terms, that'll generate an additional 2.37 million in additional property, in general fund property tax revenue. That rate includes, included in the proposed budget was proposed in order to support critical ongoing new investments, including things like police body worn cameras, costs associated with the construction of a new mixed-use downtown city hall complex, as well as continuing to rebuild the city's reserves that allowed it to help weather the pandemic. In addition, we'll have changes coming to the City Commission as part of the budget reconciliation process, whereby changes and updates to the proposed budget are shared and proposed for inclusion in the tentative and adopted budgets. Because those reconciliation channel, changes are not finalized, and they're in addition to the proposed budget, staff recommends approving the current rate of 5.6200 this evening to be advertised in order to provide the commission with maximum flexibility for upcoming budget discussions. Attached to your memo are alternative rates for the commission to consider and the change in revenue they generate. We've also included property tax impacts for homesteaded residential property, an older West Bay Drive commercial property, and a newer construction large commercial property on East Bay Drive. Some of the other rates included in the attachment to your memo are the rolled-back property tax rate, which is the rate that generates the same property tax revenue as the prior year, plus any additional new revenue for new construction and annexation, and that rate is 5.2536. A millage rate equal to or less than the maximum millage rate, which is the rolled-back rate plus Florida per capita income growth, is 5.4863. And a rate up to 5.4863 can be adopted with a simple majority vote of the commission. A millage rate up to 110% higher than the maximum millage rate requires a supermajority vote of the commission, or five out of seven, and that would be a rate between the maximum millage rate and 6.0349. And finally, any millage rate greater than 110% of the maximum millage rate will require a unanimous vote of the commission. So, as we mentioned, staff recommends that with the reconciliation changes coming at the upcoming August work session, recommends approving the current rate of 5.62 this evening, but we've also got those alternative rates for your consideration. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment.
Any questions from the commission?
So, I, I'll ask a question, since nobody else is jumping in. So, explain to me a little bit about if we approve the recommended rate of 5.62, which is the current rate, what that means, can, we can, we can go lower to what number, and how's the voting? I know you talked a little bit about that, but tell me, if that's what happens tonight, what can happen next time?
Correct. So, whatever is approved tonight will simply be advertised, and then, at that first public meeting in September, the commission will adopt a property tax rate for the coming year. And you can adopt a rate that is lower than whatever you approve tonight. So, if the 5.62 millage rate was approved tonight, you could adopt anything less than that. So, we've also included some alternatives, 5.56, which was a 6% advertised tax increase, a 6% revenue increase at 5.51, so on and so forth. You could entertain any millage rates below the 5.62. 5.62, really, anything above 5.4863 will require a two-thirds vote of the commission, so five out of seven. And anything between that rolled-back rate, 5.2536, and the maximum millage rate of 5.4863 only requires a simple majority vote, four out of seven.
Thank you. And this, this, the rate that's passed tonight will be on the trim notices that go out to residents.
Correct.
That's correct. Commissioner Smith?
At the work session with the Fab Board, I kind of hinted that I'd like to go a little lower. It's just my personal feeling on this one. I would like us to start at 5.56 to start with, to put on the trim notice, and looking at maybe going from there, but starting at that point. I made that, like I said, I made that at the Fab meeting, or the Fab Board meeting, work session, and that's where I feel comfortable at this moment supporting. So, just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Will, for the proposed millage rate tonight, if we were to propose the 5.6200, would that require a supermajority, since we're only proposing, that we're not actually setting the millage rate?
That is a great question.
I believe it just requires a simple majority, but.
Right, because you're only doing the, the trim notice.
Right.
At this point.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
I'm just gonna say, as I usually say at this time of year, this process tonight is, is pretty academic. We're putting something out there to kind of get the conversation going. I would venture to guess, if we came in with a lower recommendation tonight, we probably wouldn't hear anything about it. And I think if we come at, at where we are, recommended 5.62, we probably won't hear anything about that either. But we might. The point being is, we have other opportunities to see where other fees fall and other taxing authorities come in. So, I think it's, it's, I have every confidence that the city manager and his staff have put together a good budget, and, and I know that experience has shown us that getting back to our, where we're comfortable in our reserves and providing all the services that are out there, at least in my mind, if, if the city manager's telling me tonight that he's comfortable at 5.62, that's what I intend to support. And I, and if he said it was a higher number, I'd support it tonight just to get the conversation going. So, that's kind of my thought on, on where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robinson?
Thank you. I really, Commissioner Carroll really said everything I was thinking. I think that, that 5.62, you know, according to the explanation we just heard from Will and the conversations we've all had with Henry over the past few months, you know, I think that that's where the staff is comfortable. I tend to look at the, they're, they're experts in what they do, so I'm, I'm also comfortable supporting 5.62. And I think that Commissioner Carroll said that it's, it's a good place to start to have any conversation. There's gonna be several more conversations about this as we move forward. This is really just to, to put something on a piece of paper for the, for the trim notice. And, you know, there's nothing stopping us from going lower than this when we actually set the rate. So, but if you go to a lower rate, and then we, you know, we see some of these reconciliations come in in a couple of months, and whatever that might be, and the next thing you know, we're, you know, our, our reserves are getting lower than we want to, and then, you know, we're in a, we've put ourselves in a bad place. So, I think by setting this at 5.62 today, I think it's, it's, it's where we need to be, and I'm, I'm comfortable with having that, just putting it on the trim. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just add that I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Smith as far as would like to see that number come down a little bit. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with putting 5.62 on the trim notice, with the understanding that we, we set a plan, and the plan included a tax increase of a certain amount, and, and I'd like to get closer to that amount. I'm not saying that, you know, I, I think that we're in a position that we can, we can reduce that millage a little bit and, and still continue to provide the excellent services that we do to our residents and businesses. And so, while it's not, it's not a big number, it's not a lot of money, I, I would like to see that number come down. Saying that, I am comfortable with 5.62 for the trim notice, and then, and then we can take a more in-depth look at, at the later projections on property values and, and see what makes sense for the community moving forward. And that's where I am as well. But I agree with Commissioner Smith. I'd like to see that number come down. And I do know that we'll have an opportunity for that in the future.
I agree.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the proposed property tax rate for the fiscal year 2022 at the rate of 5.62 mils, and schedule the first public hearing for property tax rate and budget adoption on September 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six one. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2021-62.
Good evening. This ordinance requests a 10% rate increase for solid waste services across the board. The 10% increase would result in an increase for a single-family home of $2.12 per month. The main drivers of the increase include a 6% increase in tipping fees passed by Pinellas County over the last several years and projected for every year in the foreseeable future. Also, recycling sales, material sales have been down, although they're up a little slightly, which is really good news. Also, we have normal cost increases, insurance, salaries, regular fuel. It has been three years since the last solid waste increase was passed, and it's projected that this 10% rate increase would be sufficient for at least a three-year period. Of course, all projections subject to change, but it could even go further than that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and there were a few wording changes in the ordinance, just minor changes to clarify service delivery requirements and help solid waste to be able to enforce the ordinance a little easier.
Ordinance number 2021-62, and ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, Solid Waste, by amending Section 20-1 to clarify definitions, by amending Section 20-30 to increase fees for residential curbside service, and redefine bulky waste, by amending Section 20-32 to increase fees for commercial and industrial container service, by amending Section 20-71 to permit subscribers to place a lock-on enclosures of commercial service containers upon payment of a fee, by amending Section 20-72 regarding the collection of horticultural and yard waste, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no cards.
Any questions? I don't see any questions, but I see Mr. Gordon here, and I had a question, because we don't get to see you that often. I, I had a, it's kind of a personal question about the, the solid, the residential solid waste containers. Have we had any issues with, I know we replaced them on a, on a rotation to a new, slightly new style and new company. Have we had any issues, or have they been performing as expected?
Same company, Rare Pacific. We've had them for about eight and a half years. They have changed their molds a little bit here and there. But we do get a 10-year warranty on the product, so anything that's under warranty, we do get that fully reimbursed. Lids do crack, cans do bust over time and usage.
Okay. I just, I, I just, I, I didn't.
Okay. I just, I didn't, I wasn't that familiar with how well they performed before. I guess I didn't pay as much attention to it, you know, 10, 15 years ago. But I did notice when I took my recycling out at my office today, there was water in the can, and I couldn't figure out where it came from, and there was not a crack in the lid. So I was wondering if that was a common thing, or if it was unique to, maybe I need to put it in a slightly different spot at the office.
Lid could be shifted a little bit.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's my only question that I had. It didn't have anything to do with the agenda item, but it had to do with trash. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-62 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 3, 2021.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just thinking of it, Kim, a little bit, make me a little comfortable. I knew that we increased it in, or we didn't have it, the last increase was in 2018, correct?
It will be three years when this becomes effective.
Okay, and the first one we had was in, the one before that was in 2007, correct?
It was a long time, yes.
So what was the drastic, I mean, I remember that vote, so we went through that process. What made it from that long amount of time to now a three-year to, get me my head wrapped around that so I feel comfortable?
There are probably a lot of factors. One, just general cost increases. We went through a period of three years where we had no salary increases, and the economy was a little depressed, and so that helped hold down costs. We also had projected a cost increase for disposal that never materialized. They'd been, the county had been talking about it, talking about it, and just never did it. So we had a little bit of flexibility in the budget for that. And then the solid waste team has been doing a really good job of controlling costs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We're gonna talk about Starkey Road Basin best management practices. People are gonna be happy on the east side of town.
You rubbed off on me.
Good evening. The purpose of this staff report is to provide you with an update for one of our stormwater projects located within the Starkey Road Drainage Basin. The project will improve drainage in areas along the channel that is east of Starkey Road in the vicinity of Willow Avenue and its contributing ditches. So this map shows, I don't know what happened to our pointer, but anyway. This map shows Starkey Road, south of East Bay Drive. Willow Avenue runs parallel to what we call Channel 1. You can see the contributing ditches from the north. The more easternly tributary is meant to convey water from Dahlia Place and Gardenia Place, two areas that have considerable flooding issues. So this area is one of a number of locations that the city has been budgeting and prioritizing to address over the past five years that experiences persistent flooding. The award for the engineering evaluation and design was approved by City Commission on June 1, 2021. Preliminary engineering efforts are currently underway that include topographic survey, subsurface soil testing, ecological assessment, and surface water delineation. Final design is expected in the spring of 2022, and construction to follow in late spring or early summer. The construction will include upgrading and enlarging culverts and ditches and reconstructing drainage inlet structures to help convey the runoff through the collector system. The combined cost of the design and the construction will exceed 100, I'm sorry, $1 million. We are currently working with communication staff to develop a plan to keep the neighborhood updated throughout the course of the project. This will include meetings with residents, online access to project information, mailings, and door hangers as needed. So that concludes the project update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Dahlia Place was just recently in the news, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this will be addressing their concerns in that neighborhood?
That is correct.
Okay. When we get communications out, can we, and when we start this and then the completion, I think it'd be great to have that news company come back and look at everything we've done and follow up best with those residents that spoke and their concerns. And I think we'll show that we're, we've been, y'all have been working on this, and it's not something we've put to the side and forgot. So I think that would be a great opportunity to work with them and the media to show what y'all, what we're doing for them. What, is there any road construction projects in that time do we know of along Starkey Road from?
Well, the...
That hits the same time?
No, I wish.
Okay.
The county is planning a widening project for Starkey Road, but it's years out. There's no way to really be sure when that's gonna happen.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, like, I know it's probably, I agree, but I just don't want two projects hitting the head in that neighborhood and making it uncomfortable for them residents. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned two roads, Dahlia Place and the other road was what?
Gardenia Place.
Gardenia. And this, you may not know the answer to this question, but I was curious when I first saw this project or found this, saw this in the CIP really. How long have those roadways and those little neighborhoods been in Largo? I think some of those we're still annexing. Am I correct?
Well, actually, Gardenia Place, that is private, but the culvert, I'm sorry, the inlet structure that's at the end of the cul-de-sac is within an easement and within our maintenance ability and responsibility, so that'll be part of the improvement.
And my understanding, I think, is that much, or if not all of Dahlia Place, was in unincorporated Pinellas County until not that long ago? Is that correct?
That I don't know, but I could get that information for you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what I'm getting to is some of this, some of this issue, although it's our stormwater problem, we kind of inherited because we've annexed this area over the years. And so I think it's great that we're paying attention to it and fixing a frequent flooding problem in Largo. But it hasn't always been in Largo, so we haven't been ignoring it for many, many, many years, because it hasn't even been in the city for many, many years. And it's just one of the points that I wanted to make. I think that we're lucky in Largo that we don't have a whole lot of places that are low and don't have great drainage. We don't have many frequent rainstorm flooding areas that are actually in the city limits, so that's important. And I think that we need to, as we annex places that are in our municipal service boundaries, understand what we're getting if we're annexing a place that's been a frequent stormwater problem. So that's kind of, I guess, reaching out to the folks that are annexing, signing annexation agreements. Commissioner Gerard?
Thanks. Thank you for this update. And so we know when the engineering evaluation and design will begin, and then when construction is expected to begin next spring. Is there any projection at all on how long it's gonna take to get the project done? When do you think it might be complete? Or is that unfair?
Well, we hope that it's gonna start in late spring or early summer, depending on the weather. I would hope that we could get through the project in a few months, but it's really hard to say that time of year. There's also hope that we can get the final design finished a little bit earlier than spring. That would be nice, and then we could get everything started earlier.
So perhaps, hopefully, you know, by late 2022, it would be done? Okay. It's great. Folks will be happy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I was just thinking the dates that you just gave. So you're gonna start working on it during, like, rainy season? Isn't that gonna make it worse?
It isn't always ideal, but it's, we're gonna, you know, we've got to just keep following the process and begin whenever we can. Sometimes, of course, it can drag things out during rainy season, but we've got to get it done.
Well, rainy season didn't begin until this month, pretty much anyway, so, you know. So the spring's gonna be pretty dry, if it follows its pattern.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. I don't see any hands up. Thank you very much for the update. Mr. Zimmert, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
No, I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Just real quick, I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to join the meeting via Zoom. Busy few weeks for work. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to join this meeting this evening. So hopefully I'll be back home tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hulk?
Just want to reiterate what Director Byrne said. We have 11 days left of our park proclamation, and there are a lot of things still going on in the city. And I'm looking forward to, because I just love Christmas. I can't wait to go to the Christmas in July at the park this weekend. So come on out and see everybody. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Just bragging a little bit, I reached out through the city manager's office to our budget folks following our finance, taxation, and personnel meeting over in Orlando last week. Discovered there was an appetite by the other municipalities represented to take a look at some of our outreach material, like the budget in brief and so forth that our team puts out. So I had that forwarded to me all electronically, and we'll get that out to the committee. But I would invite people who are on other committees, if we get the chance to brag about what our people are doing here, it's a good way to do it. And kind of a related topic is Commissioner Smith mentioned publicizing that nice award that we got from the Florida Water Environmental Association. That would be a nice submission for League of Cities to put in their Quality Cities magazine, because I think imitation's the finest form of flattery, so when they pick up what we're doing, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
To tie on with Commissioner Hulk about the parks and rec, we have some of the greatest here. During COVID, it saved my relationship, I'll tell you that, because getting out to the preserve and to Magow and getting out and seeing our residents enjoying our parks. I thank our staff and keep doing it, and get out there and see everything else, and look forward to this weekend with the Christmas market. I think that would be a cool thing, and everybody's looking for a joyful time right now, so that's something, a cool event we need. There was an email that came into the commission by, I did not get this, but I did write a comment. It's relating to our former city manager, Susan Stanton. I know, and I wanted to explain to some of the citizens and the people that have gotten phone calls that this commission, this commission was not there at that time. And there are many things that tie into things, but I know in a certain community that got very upset and felt a dig, and I deeply apologize to them. And I think this commission definitely does not represent that, and we're moving forward. Like I said, many of us on this commission, all of us on this commission were not there, so we weren't there to make that decision and don't know everything that was running through the minds of that elected body. But I am proud of this city for moving forward. And, oh God, I'm terrible at these things. But, yeah. But like I said at that June 1 meeting, it felt, it touched me. And I think once some of the individuals learn what this commission is, they will see differently. So from my seat as a commissioner, I'm willing to say I forgive, and I ask for forgiveness from Susan Stanton. And that's just me from this seat now, and I don't want it to affect any member of the community moving forward. And like I say, I'm very proud of this city on that subject. So thank you, and thank you for everything Largo does in moving forward. And I look forward to much more with DEI and getting our public knowing we care. So thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Finger?
Thank you. There's not much more I could say besides what's been said tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to mention it's Parks and Recreation Month for 11 more days, and tomorrow Kara and Mark will have their Play on the Go trailer out at Taylor Park. I think it's from 11 to 1, so go out and join them. Plan your lunch around Taylor Park. They've got corn toss and hula hoops, and they've got all kinds of games, all kinds of stuff. So go out there and see them. It's a cool little trailer, and they'll just set up, and you can come and play and bring your kids and all that. So tomorrow, Taylor Park. You'll see them. They're in on the right. Mr. Schubert?
I have nothing this evening.
Action items?
Yes, I had three things. A request by Commissioner Smith that News of the Environmental Services Department's FWEA 2021 Collection System of the Year Award be communicated to the public. A request by Commissioner Smith that the city commission be provided with the Collective Water Resources PowerPoint presentation. And a request by Commissioner Smith that staff communicate to residents and news media when the Dahlia Place project is complete.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
Yep, that's great. Meeting is adjourned.